All right, I'd like to thank everybody for being here this evening. At this time, we are going to call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor John Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kristen Larson is absent this evening, but will be joining us telephonically for executive sessions. Councilmember Michelle Cordis.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Hughes is absent, but may be attending executive session via telephonic. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up call to the public. Call to the public is for comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules do limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. At this time, I do have one call to the public. I'd like to call up Ms. Kathy Adam.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm Kathy Adam. I live at 240 East Ruggles here in Florence. And I want to talk about a couple of things. I'm representing the Pinal County Historical Society Museum up on Main Street and let everybody know that we're open again for the season. And this year, we've changed our days a little bit, so we're open from Wednesday through Sunday, 11 to 4. And we invite you all to come up there. We are featuring an exhibit on the Junior Parada. Many items we haven't had out on the floor before. We have been extremely successful with grants, and we have some beautiful new display cases that are mounted on the wall to show the ribbons off properly. We also received a grant from APS. We're working on Apache Deer Skin playing cards, and we have a nice relationship with San Carlos on that, so we're really looking forward to that package going over maybe two years and becoming an educational tool, not just for us, but for the tribe as well. I also want to mention all the town people who have helped us so much. You all know Chief Strayer has been instrumental in getting our fire trucks on the road. Our Mack Jr. is in the shop right now. If you ever saw it, if you saw Mark's picture in the paper, it was really doggy. It took the mechanic Butch two days. It's running. He's got that thing running, and it's going to be hot, I'm telling you. So we really thank Chief Strayer for all his work in helping us, and he's always volunteered to help us with our new firehouse. I'm calling it the Town of Florence Historic Firehouse, unless anybody is a little more creative than me, but I think it speaks to what we have. The 37 Mack is, I think, our first fire truck that we can find, so. I've also had help from Chief Hughes and from Mr. Harmer. We have a bullet collection. Who knew? It's a very large bullet collection, and it turns out we have the guns that would fire those bullets. And they came up, and Lieutenant came up with them, and they were very excited. They seem to know a lot about these things, so look forward to that being mounted. Quick, quick mention. I've been working a lot with the Chamber, and I am just thrilled. I think we're really getting some momentum going this year. And I wanted to mention that Lisa Garcia and Councilmember Wall came to see us at the museum just to talk about how we could work better together. And we came up with a couple of, I think, really good ideas which are not baked yet, and you'll hear more about them. But also Larry Johnson and I were talking, and we have a wealth of information in both of our visitor logs that has not been mined, and I just wanted to throw it out to Lisa. We were talking about a potential intern. We should really go through those visitor logs and identify where our visitors are coming from and pinpoint market to those areas: A.J., the Gold Copper Corridor, Tucson. And that way, we will have some data points when we go to do that, so. I think, I hope I'm, oh, and Brian Hughes. I just, this is not part of what the museum's doing, but I was on the meeting for the parks. It is thrilling. It is, I live right near Heritage Park, and I told him, "It's a gift to the town if we can make that happen." So, thank you.
So much. I love your enthusiasm. All right, is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Closing call to the public. Item 6A is our first presentation of recognition of Florence Police Officer Jeff Palmer and Pinal County Sheriff Deputy Sergeant Roderick, R.J. Harrison, by Congressman Gofzar.
Is this on? Yeah. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, we're here today to celebrate or honor Officer Jeff Palmer for this award. Officer Palmer's been with the Florence Police Department for 13 years. He's served in the last several years as our community relations liaison officer. As a liaison to our community members, Officer Palmer reaches out to conduct security surveys for citizens as well as businesses. He also coordinates on a weekly basis with the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning to review Platts as part of the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Program. In addition to crime prevention strategies, Officer Palmer interacts with the community, providing a public and, a public service in ensuring the safety of even the youngest of our citizens by remaining trained and certified through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety to inspect and install car seats. Officer Palmer often participates in local events and visits our high school to educate drivers, young and old, on the use of car seats, seat belts, and other safe driving practices. He also visits the K-8 schools, educating students through the GREAT program, which is the Gang Resistance Education and Training. Officer Palmer truly stands out for his dedication to the safety of our community members and to uphold his oath to serve as well as protect our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, we've tried to work with our law enforcement because around the country, we have not shown the respect to the men and women in law enforcement. They go to work every day, they put their best foot forward, watching out for us, whether it be here or there. And so we want to just take the time to acknowledge the people right under our nose for the job well done. So from a grateful city, a grateful county, a grateful state, and a grateful nation, thank you for your service.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Matt Thomas. I'm the chief deputy for the sheriff's office. The sheriff sends his regards. He's out of state, meeting with some other sheriffs. So I have the honor of recognizing, it's Roderick Harrison, but we all know him as R.J. And R.J. has been a big part of my life for a while. We've known each other a long time, so it's an honor to get to read this about R.J. When you think of the words "hardworking," "passion," and "pride," there's one individual that comes to mind, and it's Sergeant Roderick Harrison, who is in charge of the PCSO Community Relations Unit. Before recognizing him, we're going to kind of go into his history a little bit and tell you a little bit about R.J. He started with DOC as a COTA graduate in 1995. He worked for DOC as part of the Community Supervision Bureau while employed for DOC. In 2000, R.J. attended the Mesa Community College Police Academy to become certified and work as a special investigator for DOC. R.J. continued to advance his law enforcement career by becoming a reserve deputy marshal for the Fountain Hills Marshals Office in 2001, and later became a deputy sheriff reserve for the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. And he did all of this while he was still employed for DOC. In 2003, we were lucky enough to get R.J. as a reserve deputy, and one year later, R.J. became a full-time employee of PCSO assigned to patrol. During his time with PCSO, R.J. began to advance his career and give back to the community he served. And during his tenure with PCSO, he's worked in the following: the Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Unit, the Traffic Enforcement Unit, the Criminal Investigation Bureau. And he now is running our Community Services Bureau, so he takes care of all of our community events. In 2018, when we created that position, R.J. quickly put in for it, was awarded that position. And that particular position is very important to the sheriff and the sheriff's office and the community we serve, because R.J. is directly tying our office to our community members with the events that he is participating in, the events that he runs the logistics for, and basically sets up the sheriff's schedule a lot of times for the events that the sheriff is going to be present at. So R.J. has a big job. He has to deal with the sheriff's schedule, which is a big job, and I give him great kudos. He's very deserving of this award. He's been one of my hardest workers. I've had him since I was a sergeant. R.J.'s worked with me and always one of the best workers, so well-deserved award.
Thank you, Matt. This just goes to show you that we have a blessing right in front of us. Here's a gentleman who has done it all, and we want to acknowledge that we're grateful for him showing up to work every day with our best intentions in mind, and the sheriff's. So, on behalf of a grateful city, a grateful county, a grateful state, and a grateful country, we want to say thank you very much for your service, Sergeant. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for bearing with us through those few moments. Our next item is 6B. This is a presentation by the Bureau of Land Management on upcoming projects. Mr. Leon Thomas, our Phoenix District Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor Anderson, Councilmembers. That was actually planned to clear the room, so if I made a mistake, nobody would have any questions for me, so. Thank you for allowing me time to come in to present to the Town of Florence Council. For the record, I'm Ed Kender. I'm the Lower Sonoran Field Manager. I work at the BLM Bureau of Land Management's Phoenix District. At this time, I'd like to introduce Brandon Colvin. He's my assistant field manager and also the Sonoran Desert National Monument Manager. BLM Phoenix District, we manage nearly 2.4, I should say, apologize for Leon Thomas not being here, he had a prior commitment, so, got the second string. We manage nearly 2.4 million acres within seven Arizona counties, and administer mineral state and additional two counties of the Navajo Indian Reservation, as you can see in the northeast corner of Arizona. We also manage 14 units of national conservation lands that include two national monuments, one national historic trail, 11 wilderness areas, as well as a national recreation trail. We actually have utilized these, the majority of the use is for recreation uses, where it includes hiking, bike rides, horseback trips, competitive motorized events, or just people seeking diverse recreational activities or peace and solitude on wilderness areas. We also manage a high-volume realty actions to accommodate renewable energy, electric transmission projects, natural gas, telecommunications, and minerals processing. We also manage a traditional resource management program such as livestock grazing, and then the Northern Field Office, where they manage wild burrows with the herd management areas. To better serve the public, the district's organized in two field offices. The Haciampa, which includes geography, a national monument, and seven surface population north and northwest of Phoenix. And as you can see, I-10 kind of bisects the Phoenix District. On the map is the part in the center-third of the state. So Haciampa is north of I-10, all the way to the border. And then the Lower Sonoran Field Office manages 1.4 million acres of public land south of I-10 to the Mexico border, and that includes the Sonoran Desert National Monument. The lands that we manage are for multiple use, as I said earlier, providing diverse recreation opportunities: mining, wildlife habitat, grazing, and wilderness, all overlaying a rich cultural past. We also oversee six wilderness areas, four areas of critical environmental concern, congressionally designated the Juan Batista de Anza National Historic Trail, and Painted Rock, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. What I'd like to talk now about is the project that we're doing, working on with the Town of Florence, and it's also in regards to the rich historic past, our cultural past, and that's the Post and Butte RMPP application. In November 2017, the Lower Sonoran Field Office received an application under RMPP Act, which is the Recreation and Public Purposes Act, from the Town of Florence to lease approximately 200 acres of public lands for recreational facilities. The select parcels are adjacent to existing patented land of the Post and Butte Preserve, which is under the management of the Town of Florence, as you all know. The two parcels that we're looking at are flanking the original RMPP, which is to the east and to the west, depicted on the map with the light, light yellow. The current process of the Post and Butte environmental assessment that we're doing is, as you can see, the plan of development is the blue line, blue arrow. We received the application in 2017, and to date, where we're at, and as you can see with the yellow arrows up and down, we, the Town of Florence has conducted the project design and also completed baseline studies for biological and cultural surveys that actually are rolled into the environmental assessment. With the environmental assessment, we are looking at how the development impacts the land, whether it's cultural resources, biological resources, or any other resources that we manage. And right now, we're at the process of the Notice of Realty action. This has to get published in the Federal Registry Notice, and that goes through a process of developing what we are doing and informs the public of our action, given that we are working on a realty action. And that is in screening process right now at our state office. We're anticipating it to be approved relatively soon. It'll be moved on to the Washington office, and once it clears that process, then it'll publish in the Federal Register Notice, which will also start kicking off the environmental process. Once that is completed and we clear that process, we will hopefully have it completed by the winter of this year, and that'll move into the, looking at completing the lease approval and signing process between the Town of Florence and the Bureau of Land Management by the spring of 2020. That'll help you in line moving forward with the plan of development for the kickoff for the anniversary. With that, there's points of contact for Leon Thomas as a district manager, also myself as a field manager with the Lower Sonoran Field Office, and also Brandon Colvin, who's assistant field manager in the Sonoran Desert National Monument. At this time, I'd like to entertain any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Okay. So I did notice when we came in, you had the posters set up in the foyer.
That was Brian, probably?
Yes.
With the project?
Yes. So I'm so sorry, I just kind of glitched in my mind for a moment.
That's okay.
Everything is very much interconnected in regards to leasing, developing different areas in our community. And for some reason, I just totally blended, so I apologize. Our heritage and our Post and Butte Preserve, because I am very excited about all of the projects that we have coming into our area. This has been a really long process since 2017, and it's not even going to be completed, like the leases in spring of 2020. And so unfortunately, one of the things that kind of frustrates me in government is how slowly things happen, but I do understand all of the background information, research that has to go forward before we can just make things happen. So I guess my question to you would be, has anybody approached you with any questions that we should be aware of? Because we're pretty well informed from staff and from working through this project over the past three years, but has anybody approached you, this evening even?
No, actually, it's been pretty quiet, and that's actually kind of nice, nice to hear, is that that's, that actually gives credit to the Town of Florence and the outreach that you have done with Brian and his group, as well as with the council members, if you're involved with talking to the public and letting them know what the project is about and what your, the whole goal of the project is for. So with that, we don't hear very much as far as any, any opposition. We've heard nothing but positive feedback for the project, which would help us with the process moving forward, that it's probably not going to be controversial. We're hoping that it isn't, and that it would move through the process rather smoothly. The longest process is actually developing a good plan with, with the site designs, where it is, the cultural, cultural resources that we inventoried, and how to avoid them. With the federal government, when we're dealing with cultural resources, avoidance is our first and foremost action that we try to take, is to avoid it as much as possible. So otherwise, it bogs down the process even more.
And you're spot on with everything that you said, and in your presentation, something that I really appreciated was how it, and I'm not even sure if you did this on purpose or not, it really ties back into our strategic plan of our rich history, our heritage, and making sure that we're preserving, planning, and preparing for future.
And, and you know, that gives credit to Brian and the group and the team that he put together, given the fact that it seems like it's a slow process going from 2017 till now. But during that process, yes, there's probably some hiccups and misunderstandings that may take place, and it's just, typically what we find is that it's almost an education process moving forward for the applicant to understand what, in order to be successful, to make sure that the planning is done in front, and it makes the whole process go smoothly from that point forward. And again, that's a good, good kudos to Brian with the relationship that we've had with him and the good communication and team that was put together moving forward.
Excellent. Mr. Billingsley, Mr. Hughes, do either of you have anything to add?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm glad Ed had the chance to come down tonight and present on the project. Last Thursday, we actually did a kickoff of the environmental assessment. There were probably 15 or 16 folks, and we were able to talk about the project in the Library and Community Center ahead of time, some of the challenges we're still going through, and then do a site visit. And I think, Ed, and for some of the people who hadn't been out there before, it's really is exciting to get up on top of the Butte and look down and look at the possibilities and how this will all tie into future plans with trails and connectivity overall. And I have to say, I feel like we've really gained a lot of momentum here in the last couple of months, and he's right, it is an education process. We throw out acronyms all the time as far as HPTP or HPTP for Historic Treatment Preservation Plan, and then all these different things, and it's really, it's, a lot of it's new to me, and some of it's new to even some of their staff sometimes, and we've managed to work really well together. And like I said, I think we see the finish line here in the spring with the leases, and I just appreciate all their efforts and how we've gotten this far, so, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you. Look forward to the next time.
Me as well. Our whole council. All right, our next presentation is Presentation and Acceptance of Donations from the Avant Guard Renewables and McClellan Parsons American Legion Post 9 for the Veterans Memorial Project. Mr. Brian Hughes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, tonight's an exciting night. It means we're getting a little bit closer to the finish line also on our Veterans Memorial Project, and we have members of the American Legion here tonight with checks totaling $15,000 from some of the fundraising efforts that have been going on for the past year, probably about a year now. So that is all the donations that have been funneled through them, and some, also just some money from the American Legion themselves. So very exciting. And then Avangrid Renewables regrets that they were unable to make it tonight, but they are also donating $1,500 to the effort, so total of 16,5 being presented tonight. So, again, very exciting, so I wanted to thank them and invite Council, Vice Mayor Anderson to come down for a photo, if we could, exchanging the checks, since he's been kind of the lead on the project for the council. And just say that we're really looking forward to the dedication on Veterans Day, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. across the street. And we have another item on the agenda a little bit later to kind of keep that process moving as well, so. Would you guys like to add anything? This is Commander Maldonado, where is your official title? First Vice Sicling, and Paul?
Paul Johnson.
Paul Johnson is the adjutant. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian. When Brian approached us about a year ago, I was very excited because we didn't have a veterans park here in, in town, and I was ecstatic for it. And going through with the GI75, we went through and we rounded up a lot of good partnerships with businesses here in town, big and small, that donated these funds, and I'd like to thank them. There's too many to name right now, but those, there was a committee on the GI75 that made it happen also, and then through that, and Ms. Kathy has been instrumental. I couldn't do what I do without Ms. Kathy. She is my vice commander for a reason, and I'd like to present her right now. Thank you, Ms. Kathy, for everything you've done. All right. And also, I'd like to present Paul Johnson. He's also my vice commander for the district.
Thank you. Make a motion to accept the donations from Avangard Renewables and McClellan Parsons American Legion Post Nine for the Veterans Memorial Project.
I second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. I'd like to say thank you through your hard work and efforts, and I know John, you know, you guys really worked together, and do you want to take a minute just to kind of talk about your vision and how you guys worked together before we move on to the next item?
Sure.
We always have new people coming into the community every day. I just want to make sure everybody's always up on what's happening, especially with, you know, opening it on Veterans Day.
Well, of course, Legion has been spearheading this from the beginning. This sort of started out as a discussion that I had with some veterans out in Sun City, and they sort of challenged me to get started with the program. And then we contacted the American Legion, said, "Would you like to be a part of it?" And they almost knocked us down, saying, "Yeah, we will." Kathy's been to all our meetings, she's just been absolutely great in helping raise the money, and it's not been an easy task because it's quite a bit of bookkeeping, and we appreciate all that she's done. We have, if you haven't seen the eagle, the eagle's over in the library, that's going to be on the memorial, and so we're getting very close. If I can just get Brian to get out there and get the concrete poured, we'll get it done here. So thank you, thank you for your support.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is Item D. This is a presentation to promote the Fire Prevention Week open house scheduled at fire station number 542 on October 5th, 2019, Chief Dave Strayer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about what you just said, the event that's coming up, the open house. The first one was held last year. I'm actually going to ask firefighter Pip in to come in and go over this with you. She set up last year's event, did a wonderful job, very well attended, rave reviews from everyone, and she's agreed to do that again this year. And as you can see by the flyer, she's already lined up a number of partners. So with that, I'm going to ask her to go through this with you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'd like to invite you to this year's open house that we're going to have at Station Two in Anthem. It's going to be on October 5th, Saturday, from two to five, and this year, we plan on having a tour of the fire station, different activities for kids. We're going to also have our ladder truck on display. Along with that, we're going to have partnering agencies, Life Net, AMR, the New Florence Hospital, the Florence Police Department, Horizon, and Fire Master to join us. The agencies are going to also have their, the Anbo for display, the helicopter, and different tables and events at the open house. At the open house, we're also going to have information on our fire safety and prevention programs and sign up sheets for anyone who is interested in it. This year, we are adding an extrication demo, where the crews are going to be available there to show what happens on a live extrication and allow the community to be up close and kind of see what goes on. And of course, we're going to also have some raffles for the fire department. Is there any questions I can answer for you?
Any questions?
Well, I had a question for the chief. When he first put out his notice, he said Station 542. I didn't know where that was. We call it Station Two, right?
Yeah, so there's a statewide numbering system for the statewide mutual aid, and technically it's 542. It's our Station Two.
Yeah, okay.
One of the things I noticed and I really liked is how you're alternating the different stations every year.
Yes, that's our plan, that we're hoping to just continue alternating, making sure that we're hitting all areas of our community.
And if anybody didn't have an opportunity to go last year, it was a lot of, it was very informational first, I'll put that out there rather than jumping right to you, it was a lot of fun, you know, especially if you have children, and it shows them, you know, if you have a fire, and you have firemen that come into your house, not to be scared of them. It's just the more we can expose, you know, everybody to our public safety services we have to offer in regards to prevention as well as being comfortable around them, the better it is for everybody.
Yes, hopefully, we will see all you guys.
Absolutely, thank you. Chief, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, just like to invite everyone, we're already getting a great response, we're expecting a lot of numbers again this year, so thank you.
Thank you. And the flyer looks great. All right, Item E is going to be postponed until the next meeting at the request of Chief Hughes. Item Seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote. As part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Penile County and the Town of Florence to remediate the State Route 79 drainage issue at the Penile County Superior Courthouse. The amount to be paid to Penile County shall not exceed $1,225. Item B is authorization to contract with Florence True Value Hardware to provide maintenance, repair, operating supplies, industrial supplies, and related products and services in an amount not to exceed $28,000. Item C is approval of resolution number 1717-19. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, designating Ray Sanchez, Finance Director of the Town of Florence, Arizona, as Chief Financial Officer, designated to officially submit the Expenditure Limitation Report for the Town of Florence, Arizona. Item D is for the Town of Florence, motion to approve and ratify a legal services engagement and retention agreement with the Sims Mackin LTD and Kathy Bowman for legal representation of the Town of Florence, Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One and Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, for the purpose of defending claims and litigation including alternative dispute resolution, discovery, trial, post-trial motions, appeals, and authorization to enter into related common interest agreements. Item E is approval of the August 5th and August 19th, 2019 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item F is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. One, May 9th, 2019, Arts and Culture Commission Meeting Minutes. Two, June 26th and July 31st, 2019, Historic District Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes. Three, July 25th, 2019, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Minutes. And four, July 18th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there any member of council or public that would like any item removed at this time?
Yes, I'd like Item D removed.
Item D? Hi. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda removing Item D?
I motion that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item D.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Vice Mayor Anderson.
I have a question on why is not the Facility District paying that fee rather than the town?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, this item is an item to retain legal services of Sims Mackin and in particular Kathy Bowman to represent, and you'll see a similar item in the two district agendas, District One and District Two. The, there have been a series of letters written by the merril entities to the districts and the town that necessitate kind of more in-depth specialized legal analysis and potential litigation defense. As for the expense or the costs in defending each of the districts and the town, there very likely could be reimbursement or payment from our insurance carrier, the district's insurance carrier, but those decisions are not finalized. So this is a precautionary matter that's on the agenda item for each entity, the town, CFD One and CFD Two, to retain council, including working through some of those coverage issues.
I'm not questioning that we don't need to have the council, you know, the council. My question is, should the district be paying that rather than the town?
Well, as I said, first of all, I don't want to give you legal advice in an open meeting on an ongoing claim and litigation as far as expenses. As I said, there are outstanding potential coverage issues by the risk pool for each of the districts and the town. So it may be in part an issue of insurance coverage covering some of the expenses, but I don't have any final decisions on that to report to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I make a motion that we approve Item D for the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. And that motion carries. Our next item is our new business, another one I'm very excited to discuss, Item A. And as you entered the building this evening, you probably saw the amazing displays set up. This is a discussion on the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, Mr. Brian Hughes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, this is exciting. As you know, the kickoff for the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan began earlier this year back in January, where we met with stakeholder groups, had public meetings in both Library and Community Center and up at the Anthem Community Center, and then followed up with a survey that was to a direct group, and then there was also an open link survey that was put out to the public, so we got a lot of good feedback, over 400 surveys were returned, and so again, lots of good feedback. And from that, we did a presentation, a public presentation back in the end of June to kind of present those results, and we'll go over kind of with the presentation tonight what the results were and what the recommendations are going to be as far as moving forward with this comprehensive plan. The last comprehensive plan was adopted in 2008, and a lot of things have changed since then, and so we're looking at this as really an update of that plan and kind of addressing some things that have changed as far as population projections, what we're currently doing that we weren't doing back then, park usage, things like that, and an assessment of the parks. So a lot of things to talk about. We kind of streamlined the presentation a little bit for tonight, but what we're going to be doing is getting feedback between now and October 7th. So we presented to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board this afternoon and asked them to give us some feedback on the draft plan at this point, and they asked for you guys to do the same, give us some feedback on what you see, what you like, what you don't like, and we'll go from there. And again, when we come back later this year, we'll be with the final plan that incorporates all your comments and anything that we may hear between now and then. But as you mentioned, we've got some of our, one of the display boards for conceptual drawing for Heritage Park out in the lobby, and it's very exciting. It's what could be, if we can make it happen, and we've had it on display over at the Library and Community Center for the last week since we got that draft done and presented to the Parks and Recreation Board with that, and just been a lot of good feedback. So I'm excited about that and with the overall plan. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Pat O'Toole with Greenplay, he's our lead consultant, and Aaron Allen with J2 Design, he is the landscape architect that's making some of these images come to life for us. So they'll kind of give you an overview of the draft plan at this point and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, it's a privilege to be down here, again, looking at the system and being able to present that tonight. What we're going to try to do is, you've had the draft plan in your packet. We also have an addition, which is the action plan, which is what we're going to kind of cover tonight. So we'll kind of hit the high spots of that as we go through the presentation. First thing I want to do is just talk a little bit about the process. We are at the third of four stages of public input or public engagement, and that is, we're at the draft now, looking for any edits and comments to take this to a final master plan, and we'll be back to present that November, December is the game plan. Schedule, we're right at the final stage down there below, the bottom icons are the number of trips that we've made down to put this plan together, and as Brian said, it's been a process, very thorough information from the public as we've put this plan together. So tonight, basically, this table is what we call the action table. It kind of summarizes the recommendations. We've put them into four major goals with several objectives, and then the individual action plans, which are in the column, the first column. The second column is the capital cost associated with that action step. Third column is the operation and maintenance cost of that, and then the fourth one is, is it a short-term, midterm, or long-term action plan? We define those in our plan as short terms, first one to three years, midterms, four to six years, long terms, eight to 10 years, leaving it flexible to move that around. So the first goal that we talk about is the organizational and administrative portion. First objective is to improve the level of communication and awareness of the department to all residents of Florence. And I'm going to just hit the highlights, I think you've got it in front of you, if you've got any questions, we'll be able to answer those. Basically, this is to enhance the awareness of programs and facilities, both in Florence proper, Anthem, the other areas out there, so they at least know what's going on, to serve all of those areas, but right now, to concentrate on Florence, but do an outreach program so they at least know what's going on. Currently, they very actively participate in the special events down here, and to bridge any of those awareness gaps as we discovered have been happening out there. Second objective is enhance and improve marketing and branding with residents and visitors, and our recommendation is to develop a strategic marketing and branding plan. The second part of that, which would be included, is to upgrade signage standards. And the third one is budget amounts to fund any new events that come on as new special events, to make sure that we have the money in the budget to carry those out. There we go. Next objective was address and identify opportunities for sustainability. Research and develop conservation measures, develop best practices for sustainability, including water conservation and open space preservation. Second goal deals with all the programs and service delivery. First objective is enhance programming for teens. You've got a very active and large numbers on the teen advisory council, and recommendation to engage them into what they would like to see that would be successful for the teens as far as programming. Second objective is increase opportunities for special events and community gatherings to continue to provide high-quality special events with a variation possibly of a farmer's market, which came out very high on the survey. Next objective was increase opportunities for special interests and non-traditional programming, so more special interest programs. Some of the examples were cooking, some STEM programs, some VOTEC. Keep up with my papers here. The next objective was enhance opportunities for outdoor recreation and fitness programs. Develop outdoor recreation programs and partner with other organizations. Examples will be hiking and biking, disc golf, utilizing the outdoor for some programming. Capitalize on the natural resources that you have out here that are outstanding, and expand on the fitness offerings. expand on the fitness offerings. Next objective was address opportunity for therapeutic recreation and program accommodations, basically to develop accommodations for people with disabilities and the ability to program for their wants and needs, for some programs that would address their needs. Reevaluate program delivery service hours. We heard maybe some more programming for the working public early morning, in the evenings and weekends when they're available to attend programs. And reevaluate program delivery for program evaluation process and implement a standardized feedback system, so everybody has an opportunity to not just provide feedback on the existing program they went through, but what they'd like to see in the future. I'm going to turn it over to Aaron for all of the facility stuff.
Yeah, so one of the major objectives that came out was increased connectivity throughout the entire community. So tailoring on what has already been done with the active transportation plan, so improve trails and path connectivity. So part of that is acquiring acreage for multi-use trails, improving linkages to destinations within the town such as Post and Butte. Again, improving Post and Butte as that kind of central hub with a trailhead facility, and then also ensuring that future development and existing development is all connected through trails and pathways. Connecting, again, existing Florence with growing areas of Florence through off-highway, non-paved trails, and then also with paved street pathways and bikeways. Address the opportunity for recreation center improvements. So this was looking at a multi-gen center, doing a feasibility for that, what that multi-gen center could provide, such as classes for fitness, health, a new modern facility that has ADA-accessible fitness gym, and then with a new multi-gen center that does give the opportunity to potentially sell or repurpose the current fitness and senior facility. Build upon the demand and success for pickleball, so adding new pickleball courts. Plan and strategize for additional community parks, so that's looking at areas where Florence can grow to have new parks and develop impact fees and a strategy for utilizing those for future parks. Address accessibility, so that's developing ADA transition plans for park facilities and making sure that there's access to new amenities and existing amenities. And again, looking at shade came up multiple times with the public, looking at the existing aging infrastructure in all of the current facilities and coming up with standards of how those are for basically brand, ease of maintenance, and keeping up with aging. Improve partnerships and relationships to increase level of service, so looking for alternative providers and looking at potential public and private partnerships for different programs and youth sports. From the financial aspects?
Okay, the fourth goal was the financial aspects. And the first one was to consider a bond referendum for most of the capital, the major capital costs. Increase resources towards grants and other philanthropic efforts. Ensure staff, utility, and supply budgets are increased to take care of any new operations that come into existence, so that there's the budget to maintain what you build. Second part was reevaluate the current budget policies to consider establishing new policies. Establish a fund that would keep up with the deferred maintenance, maintain those things as they deteriorated rather than wait until it's a big-ticket item and replacing everything. So more of the infrastructure cost. And the last one was ensure cost recovery policy, so that we have a formula put together that's consistent across the board on how user fees are directed and what direct costs they cover, and basically placing your tax dollars to support those areas that you really want to support, and the other areas that maybe can afford to carry their own weight. Now, just like out in the lobby, we have the three individual park master plans.
So with Main Street Park, really the main things that, actually with all three site-specific, Main Street, Little League, and Heritage, the kind of the common theme that came throughout was shade, lighting, walking paths, and, you know, update and upgrade the existing amenities that were there. So for Main Street Park, looking at the Ramada's site furnishings, potentially adding a restroom and improving circulation that is ADA-accessible. Little League Park, the dugout and fencing needs to be replaced, updating the irrigation system, dog park amenities, expanding potentially the dog park area, adding lighting, and then looking at the restroom facility there for upgrades. Heritage Park, again, the restroom concession building has some plumbing issues, so looking at replacement of that. Park amenities, just upgrading to new lighting, redoing the amenities that are there. Connectivity throughout the park, there's a lot of existing amenities that people can't reach because they're just isolated. And then the irrigation system itself is kind of at the end of its useful lifecycle. And then the parking lot, again, is deteriorating, and then the accessibility.
Okay, as I said before, the next steps are to get one set of comments from everybody, run through Brian, and back to us by October 7th. We'll make those final edits to the draft and schedule a final presentation, probably similar to this, but not redundant, be more of a Q and A is typically where we do that and to look for some sort of adoption. And with that, we're open to any questions you might have.
First, council, are there any questions?
Well, I'm concerned about the money it's going to take to do all this. And I feel we need to look at the strategic plan before we get too involved in this because there will have to be some priorities on what funds are available and how we're going to fund all this, because this is just one thing that the town has to do.
Any other comments? Okay, all right. Mr. Hughes?
Just Mayor, Vice Mayor, to your comments, certainly, again, this is the first draft that we're looking at right now, and we do have an opportunity to maybe take a look at that and tie it into the strategic plan and see how that plays out and what the priorities might be. So we have a little bit of time, as you saw on the slide there, where, you know, adoption of the final plan could be as late as the end of the year, maybe even later if we have to push back to tie into something. So again, this is just first draft for all you to take a look at. There are a lot of big-ticket items in there, and we're going to have to figure out how to tackle that and prioritize that. But certainly, it's a starting point. We want to get as much feedback as possible to move forward.
Well, I think it's a great, great plan. I just don't know how we're going to fund all this.
Sure. Well, is one thing that was reassuring to us as we went through some of those action items and did get some of the feedback from the public, a lot of things that are in there as far as some objectives and action plans, we've already started on some of that stuff. So some of that stuff is things that we can do, but the capital items certainly are a big-ticket item that we're going to have to look at.
Thank you.
So I do have one thing to say. This has been an amazing process to go through. I do know that there's a lot of excitement and momentum in the community in regards to the feedback that we're, that we're hearing. So I appreciate the plans being out and especially on display over at our community center. I was unaware of when the feedback needed to be, you know, brought in by, so it was good to see on that PowerPoint. October 7th is when, you know, final feedback has to be handed in. So anybody in our community that would like to communicate to us your feelings, how you like the project, what changes would you propose, if any, it's all really valuable because this is our community, this is our park, this is our area. So?
Just final thought to that point, we will put up this presentation and some of those images on the project page on the town's website, so people can take a look at that.
Thank you, appreciate that. And thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. Our next item is Item B. This is a presentation proposing the Florence Veterans Memorial Plaza as the formal name of the new memorial located south of the library and community center. Mr. Brian Hughes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, this is to go along with the donations that we received earlier and the progress that we're making on the Veterans Memorial. When we were meeting as the Veterans Memorial Project Committee, one of the things that was discussed was kind of naming that plaza so that it was a destination for folks that they could come, and we'd have a plaque up there recognizing our donors and the official name. And so we also took that to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and they agreed that that was a great idea. So this is really kind of a feel-good housekeeping item, if you will, that we're just going to designate that plaza outside the south side of the Library and Community Center as the Florence Veterans Memorial Plaza moving forward.
Excellent, thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, I just want to thank Brian for all the work he's done, because it has been rather frustrating, some of the things that we've run into. It's such a small project, but we can't get contractors to bid on, you know, pouring a little bit of concrete for us. Everybody's so busy, this is too small for them. So Brian and I may be out there with our hard hats on doing this.
Maybe, we're committed.
Yeah. I want to thank him for all the work he's done.
Thank you. I appreciate your support. And Mayor, this is an action item, we certainly want the council's approval on this.
Absolutely. Question before we make a motion, have you found somebody to pour the concrete yet?
Still working on that. We're actually meeting with ACI tomorrow morning, Phil Foster and the Inmate Labor Group, to find out if that's something they can do for us.
Okay, excellent. If not, in this court as council member, can you help me? There's a gentleman, Mike Sullivan, he owns a company in Anthem Community.
It's called Arizona...
Homescapes Landscapes?
Arizona Homescapes Landscapes. He typically only works in Anthem, so I don't, and I don't know if he does anything outside of homes. But yeah, he's, he's very popular and like the go-to guy, so I don't know. But yeah, but yeah, Mike Sullivan is his name.
Yes, and I do know that he's partnered before with Anthem K-8 School when they had their Be Kind Rocks.
Yeah, they have a, we did, the first Be Kind project that Anthem K-8 did was a rock garden, and he came in and cemented the rocks in for us, and he actually did that at no cost. He donated all his material and his labor, so that was really nice of him. But yeah, it's still standing there, it's still there, holding those rocks down, so...
Well, Mayor and Council, if we get to that point where we need additional help, we'll certainly hit up Mr. Sullivan, so thank you.
All right, excellent, thank you. And with that, I do need a motion acknowledging the name Florence Veterans Memorial Plaza as the formal name.
I make a motion that we recommend that the Florence Veterans Memorial Plaza as the formal name for the new memorial located south of the library and community center.
I second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. Motion carries. Our next item is Item C. This is discussion and possible action on setting work sessions on the fourth Monday of the month from October 28th, 2019, to March 27th, 2020. And this is tied in with our strategic plan.
Mayor, members of council, I do want to make one correction, because we're actually going to ask for the last Monday of the month. Our plan, our policy actually states that we will go the second Monday of the month, but after reviewing the calendar, there are multiple dates that fell on a actual holiday. So rather than to do that, we went in and looked. The difference would be is that if we went the fourth Thursday of the month, we would be meeting on December 23rd. If we go the last, or the Thursday, last Monday of the month would be December 33rd, 23rd, and the, the fourth Thursday, the fourth Monday, I'm sorry, the fourth Monday of the month would be December 23rd, the last Monday of the month would be December 30th. So we were pushing it out to the 30th rather than the 23rd. All other dates fall on. It would be October 28th, regardless of whether it's the fourth or last, November 25th, January 27th, February 24th, and it'll be March 30th rather than 23rd. And so we're looking for the last Monday of the month.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Just for the December date. I believe we have a policy to not hold a council meeting on the third Monday of December. Instead of doing it the 30th of December, which is right before the New Year's holiday, could we make that December 16th a work session?
Yes, we could definitely do that.
And state that as a work session date as opposed to the 30th. I know a lot of people like to take holidays between Christmas and New Year's.
We can do the last Monday of the month excluding December, where we'll meet on the 16th.
That, that would be my suggestion. And also, just a quick correction, March 27th is actually a Friday.
Yeah, that's, it's the 23rd or 30th, so the last, the last Monday of the month will be the 30th.
In?
March.
March? Oh, okay. So it'd be March 30th.
Yes, and we plan on having at least a two-hour meeting on each one of those days.
Excellent, yes. Yes?
Yeah, I'm fine. I just thought that the December 16th might be a better date.
I like that, that's a great suggestion.
Staff will enjoy that also.
Okay, with that, we need a motion?
I'd like to find out, are these going to be at night or daytime?
These will be, we will start them at 6:00 at night, that's your regular start, regular start time. So we'll be meeting 6:00 at night for our work sessions.
Okay. I just didn't see any time there, I'm just curious. Thank you.
I motion that we approve setting work sessions for the last Monday of the month with the exception of December, which would be held on December 16th.
I'll second that. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next item is Item D. This is a discussion and possible action on the Town of Florence participating in the Center for the Future of Arizona, Beat the Odds Leadership Academy, in partnership with the National Institute for School Leadership, Criterion Education, LLC. Before I turn it over to Ms. Garcia, I just wanted to share a little bit of excitement for what I learned with Ms. Garcia, as well as how I would like to apply this in moving forward. So a few years ago, we had partnered with the Progress Meters Arizona achieves 360. Other Arizona mayors that participate on this are Casa Grande Mayor Craig McFarland, Flagstaff Mayor Coral Evans, Lake Havasu Kalshini, Sawarhita Tom Murphy, and Anna Tovar in Tolson. Now, there have been 60 communities that have jumped on board, adopted these progress meters in their community, and are currently working with them. So the goal, and I just have a few things I want to share, this came from when we attended the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference. Ms. Garcia, myself, attended the education component in the morning session, and it was a wealth of information of how everything ties together. This is where I want to share with you at this time, a shared vision for an excellent education for all. So we believe that every student deserves an excellent education every step of the way, and Arizona voters agree that education is a top priority. The students, of every student, is vital to our state's economic prosperity, quality of life, and civic health. Now, at that, I'm just going to pause, because you're probably saying, okay, well, education, how does that tie in? okay, well, education, how does that tie in with our government? How does that tie into our community? Well, a lot of what we do is growing our future leaders. We have our Florence Teen Council. We have our Youth Advisory Commission. I also had mentioned earlier, economic prosperity, quality of life, civic health. In the session that we attended for, I believe it was three hours, nine to 12, we really dug into a lot of data. Connected communities data profile, the geography of all of our Arizona counties, civic participation data profile. You would be surprised, one of the statistics that I learned is approximately only 11% of our community will actually reach out to an elected official to communicate any concerns that they have or any suggestions that they have. And a lot of that really drills down deep into, they never really had that opportunity to learn how or who to communicate with, how to communicate with them. So that was pretty interesting as well. They have the education data profile, and I'm going to allow Lisa to touch on that once I'm kind of done. Because I really want to go into our health and well-being. And this goes through all of the statistics in regards to percentage of Arizonians without health insurance, relative cost of it, obesity, access to primary care practitioners, air quality, physical activity, infant mortality. Just the array of what was covered and how it tied into the consortium of what they're doing was astounding. The last two we really dug into are the ones that, looking at it, is something that we've taken a lot of pride in our community for, the infrastructure data profile. Over the past two years, we've really put a lot into our infrastructure. When we're looking at our quality of public transit, bridge pavement conditions, roadway fatalities, and serious injuries. And last but not least, our jobs profile. So this is going to cross into multiple areas of our community. Now, this opportunity came about because as we were going through all of the data, and as we're diving in and having the discussions, Ms. Katie, help me with her last name, Ms. Lisa. She's the director of it. Kavanaugh, Katie Kavanaugh. She's the director. She came over. And she was really interested in our conversation at that time. Because Ms. Garcia had an insight where the entire table had an aha moment of how everything looped together and everything was connected, and how that foundational piece was that education component in our community. After the session had ended, she approached us. And she invited us to consider participating in what is called the Center for the Future of Arizona, which is the Beat the Odds program. And at that time, you know, we were interested. We sat, we listened to more about what the program was, which is all the information that's in the packet that was shared. In meeting with her, we also invited Supervisor Mike Goodman, County Superintendent Jill Broussard, Joel Vegas, and Lisa Garcia and I. At this meeting, we were presented with the unique opportunity of a $20,000 program for $5,000 because there's government grants that are funding it. As well as to carry on the continuity of the program, Ms. Garcia will be a train the trainer. So she'll be able to go forward and train people that want to participate, our staff, our community. So, Ms. Lisa Garcia, at this time, I just want to turn it over to you with also that focus of our vision, moving forward, how it ties in with our economic development, some of those conversations that we had.
So as part of the conference, one of the main focuses was how, how are we going to create the future for Arizona? And it all ties back to having students who are ready for the workforce. And one of the levels that they're talking about is through this Leadership Academy program. So much of school, 44% is considered other. And so they're looking for industry partners. They're looking for people that are outside the school system to take the program, to bring back world, real-world experience, to be able to expose those in an educational program to say why these needs exist. And as Mayor Walter said is that when you go back through and you look at the progress meter, every progress meter is actually tied together. So in order to actually move the needle, which is what the state is trying to do, and to create economic development, create growth, create viability for our future, it's all starts and ends with education and making sure we have a viable workforce in the future. And this is one of the tools that they're trying to do to go in and create a successful program. How it will tie together in the future, we've talked to Supervisor Goodman about possibly doing a town after we go through the program, about possibly coming back and doing a Penau County Town Hall to be able to go out and express the importance to all the communities. We also talked about working with the Arizona Center, Arizona Center We Want, I think it's called, Arizona We Want, to be able to develop progress meters for Penau County as well as each community within Penau County. So we can watch our progress. And to have the county come in and take a leadership role to be able to tie it back and everybody have one agency to report back to. It's a long game. It's not anything that's going to change within the next four years, the next five years. It's really going in and doing something that's going to change the future. And it may be a 15 to 20-year-long waiting game to see real change move. But we've got to do something to start moving the, the needle now. And so that's what this group is doing. And we were invited to participate if the council so chooses for us to do so.
So, and we're the first unique community of this type of composure with our county leadership, our town leadership, and tying it back in with our strategic plan moving forward that will have this opportunity.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Actually, I have a few questions. The document that is in our packet, the heading on it is Executive Development Program for School Leaders. And I have to wonder, is Florence Unified contributing to the cost for this program?
So Florence Unified is separate in this regards. I believe they are looking at sending, because we did try to loop in their agency, they're trying to send in their curriculum and instruction director. So they will have somebody participating.
So, recognizing that you're also an educator and, and, you know, I appreciate that sincerely, it would be helpful to know how you would anticipate bringing back what you might learn from this program to both the school district and the town?
Well, and I put a lot of thought into this, believe me. So my role is unique, and I wear two different hats. And I always try to draw a very hard line at my two different hats. But understanding it has an impact on the community as a whole. What we're bringing back is open to the public. It's going to be trainings that are going to be open to our council. It's going to be trainings that are open to our community. It's going to be across the sector from healthcare, infrastructure, jobs, education. We've also talked in utilizing this data to create different commissions or committees. Haven't totally tweaked what one it would be yet, and the difference between the two in regards to our role. But an economic development committee or commission, a committee on our health and wellness being things that we can control. We already hire our staff, you know, to focus on that infrastructure. They bring that to us based on their knowledge and experience. I'd like to tie in the education component with our youth advisory committee, with our youth teen council. So this way they can advocate more. They have more of a voice and an impact in regards to the education that, you know, they're receiving, and how it could be better improved for them. So it's just an investment in the community as a whole, is how I view it.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Okay, so with this, I'm assuming that we would be covering this cost out of Budget 402? And that it would be the two members to attend National Cities and Towns Conference, budgeting each member $6,000? So that would eliminate the mayor's opportunity probably to go to Washington?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then my other comment is, it's 12, consists of 12 two-day units, delivered over a 12 to 15-month program. So that's two days out of the month that you're going to have to attend these, several hours, I'm sure. So not wanting to overwhelm your schedule because you already have a lot of meetings that you have to attend, will you or are you going to consider maybe delegating some of your other committees that you're on to other members? You know, just for examples, not ones that have to be like the mayor's breakfast, maybe the vice mayor could go to that, CAG, MAG, any of them, just so that you don't get overwhelmed because you do work a full-time job as well. And so I'm thinking that, you know, if maybe to help, so that you could get as much out of this as possible and really dive into it hard if you would want the rest of council to help pick up some of the other committees that you're on.
You know what? That's a great suggestion, and I really appreciate you bringing that forward. Because to be honest, I hadn't thought about that in regards to taking something off of my plate. Those of you that know me, I kind of, I keep piling it on and piling it on. But yes, I, I think, I want to think about that. But I feel that it would be helpful, especially some of the MAG meetings, they meet, you know, typically during the day. CAG is at the evening. So if it's, you know, a super long day, and we can definitely visit that. Vice Mayor, would you be open to attending a few meetings if I needed to take a few things off my plate?
Offer to do that.
Okay. Or Councilmember Cortez? Okay. Councilmember Wall?
Yeah, I'm wondering, you said you're going to bring back all this information and teach it to the community? Who's going to do the teaching?
So this is the interesting part. Ms. Garcia, will you share, well, actually, I'm going to back it up, even a few years ago, when we partnered with, and we, meaning the Town of Florence, partnered with Penau County ESA, and they designed our library and some of those activities and some of those projects. And in what we learned, we'll be able to not only bring it to the adults in the community by having sessions that would be at our community center, but also in how we get it down to our children in our community through the different projects, through the different activities and opportunities. So for example, we have a, we talked about this evening, a recreational facility, a multi-generational recreational facility. Ms. Garcia, I'm going to tap you in on this one because we've had some conversations about how we can partner with town, county, Penau County ESA, and bringing that down to the children in our community as well as adults to get their feedback for that. Will you share a little bit about that discussion?
Well, that's a surprise for later. But we, we do have programs that we're working on through the school superintendent's office. And they're going in and they're allowing the Town of Florence to partner. I'll, I'll, I'll share with you.
Oh, that's right. We're not going to say that until October 2nd.
Yeah. I do, I do have one thing that I'm happy to share, and it's a, it's a Public Works wastewater thing, is that the school's sixth graders will be coming in and they'll, seventh graders, seventh graders will be coming in, and about 100 children will be doing a tour of the wastewater treatment plant. That is very exciting because a wastewater treatment plant operator is a certification position, and there are more wastewater treatment plant operators that are needed in the world. So hopefully that some of our kids get excited about the lab work that happens and the science that happens behind a wastewater treatment plant. And they want to come, come and work for the Town of Florence in that capacity. If they get excited when they're young, there's no telling what they can do. And a lot of people do find their careers by going on field trips or, or attending things and finding out, wow, you can make really good money without having a high school or without having a college diploma, but having a certification process. So that's one thing we're doing. And our town manager, Brent Billingsley, is going to lead that group with the help of the wastewater treatment plant officers and our Public Works Director. So it's very exciting. I do want to say one thing, although it says schools, because I also, when I was contacted to participate in the program, I said, I'm government, I'm not schools. And they came back and they said, it's one of the leading leadership programs in the country. And it was designed not only for schools, military, and government agencies. So they said there's two units that do focus on English, science, math, but the rest of it is leadership development. And as for myself, if I go, they have me attending as part of, it's called best-in-class. And that means that I'll be provided additional training to the tune of six facilitation classes to be able to facilitate for them in the future when they come to Penau County. And so that's what the program is. And they have sent a contract that has been reviewed by our town manager and is for, in my position and what I was offered, it's for a three-year commitment. And not a year and a half to a two-year commitment. It is for a three-year commitment.
And share with them where we're holding the majority, at least, of these trainings?
We are going to be holding at least one session in Florence. That means that for one period, we will be in Florence. They like our facilities very much, and they plan on coming. Also, we're going to be doing the very first kickoff session here. And if the cohort agrees, and that's whether or not we're on, whether we're participating or not, we've offered our facilities.
And then also the tie with CAC.
You can do that one.
Okay, so Evelyn Kasura. Kasuga. See, I didn't want to say her name incorrectly.
I didn't know, I didn't know what we were going to talk about. Evelyn Kasuga, yes, she's part of the program as well.
So she's part of the program. She educationally contributes a lot in our community, and she's really taken a leadership role in this organization. They have ties with some of our business partners in regards to APS is one of their largest. So it just, it creates that culture of working together. And again, it touches upon many different aspects of our community. And understanding our council and our current strategic plan, and I know it's going to grow and change, I feel that it's a very strong tie, and it complements it well in our direction. Absolutely.
I don't know if this is an elephant in the room, but my term, your term, Bill's term, a few of our terms are up at the end of 2020. Where do you go if you aren't on the council? What happens to the knowledge that you've gained?
I'll still contribute. I'm planning on proposing a committee, for example, in regards to, actually, I'm planning on proposing multiple committees. And I'd be happy to serve on that with the knowledge gained and continue contributing to the community. Are there any other questions? All right. With that, we need a motion.
I motion that we approve for Lisa Garcia and Mayor Tara Walters to attend, to participate in the Center for the Future of Arizona, Beat the Odds Leadership Academy in partnership with the Nation Institute of Schools Leadership Criterion Education, LLC.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to handle the manager's report a little different than I do on my usual off sessions. I've got several items today, but I want to acknowledge participation from the mayor and council members to let the, the public know about some of the things that you're doing in the community that are, that are of benefit and give the in the community that are, that are of benefit and give the staff an opportunity to thank you for your hard work. The first one that I have, very proud of, is our inaugural Patriots' Day luncheon for first responders, which was held on September 11th of last week. I was asked to name the sponsors at that event that assisted the town: EJ and C Heating and Cooling, Baca Studio, Total Concept, Penal County Mounted Posse, Mount Athos, Florence Cafe, American Legion Post 9, Old Pueblo, and McDonald's, and to thank the mayor for attending that event and luncheon. I know it was very well received by the folks that were there, and we actually had two first responders to 9/11 in New York City that attended that luncheon. Second, we recently had a series of meetings with the Lincoln Institute of Land Use Law, the Babett Center of Water, and the U of A Water Research Center that we hosted at the community center. And I want to thank Councilman Anderson for his contribution in helping to set up one of those meetings, and then also participating on behalf of the town of Florence in those discussions with those entities. Next, I had an opportunity to go to lunch with the entire Industrial Commission of Arizona last week, and I want to thank Councilmember Hughes for attending that event with me and engaging in conversation with respect to the Industrial Commission, which held one of their statewide meetings in Florence last week at the county complex. And lastly, at the last meeting, I talked about the start of the POWWOW process, and that's obviously materials without waste, and it's a farmer's market-type setup that will bring excess materials in terms of fruits, vegetables, et cetera, to the town of Florence. And I had mentioned that our first POWWOW will be on November the 23rd. Since that time, we've gotten several questions with respect to where will that be held and when. So that POWWOW event on November 23rd will be held at Heritage Park, actually in the parking lot, and will begin early, early that morning in the parking lot. I also neglected to thank Mayor Walter for her contributions with respect to the POWWOW and getting staff in contact with the right people and getting the ball moving with respect to that event. So those are my thank-yous for tonight.
Thank you. That was super-kind. I had one question that hopefully you can answer. In regards to the training, so for example, Mosaic Church had offered to help, what type of training and who should they reach out to in regards to receiving the training to be a volunteer for that event?
So there was a request to choose two to three different lead man, is what they call it. Sounds a little sexist, it could be lead woman too, but they call it lead man. And those folks were supposed to go and actually attend a POWWOW event, receive training and understanding of how they work. We've sent a number of folks that have gone and done that. I believe, and I don't want to talk out of turn here, Brian, but the plan is that first weekend, that first event, the folks from POWWOW will be attending, and the folks that we've had trained that have experience that are lead man or lead woman will also be providing some training for folks at that event. Apparently, I missed something.
The head honchos. Head honcho is the official term, and John Nixon is currently our head honcho for the town, and I believe Chris Buchanan is our backup, so. And Ally and I have both attended POWWOW events recently, so we kind of saw how it flows and things. But John will be heading up the volunteer recruitment and training, so if anybody wants to volunteer for the POWWOW program, they can get with John, and he's going to be kind of putting that together here over the next few months. But our first official one, as Brent said, is November 23rd, so we have a little bit of time, and that coincides with their produce season too, so.
I'm excited. I may have misspoken and told people October, but we'll get that corrected. All right, with that, this is our second call to the public. Is there anybody at this time that would like to speak? Closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Cortez?
Yes, I do have a couple things. One, I'd like to say how excited I am to see the parks growing and just expanding and getting to be beautiful, because parks, I think, drive a lot of your community, because it gives people somewhere to go and hang out and gives you places to hold your events and things like that. So I, I'm really excited about that. I'm excited about what the mayor and Lisa Garcia are going to do. I think that'll be a complete asset to all of us here in Florence. I do want to remind everybody, in case you don't know, our teen council, along with the Florence Women's Council or Committee, are hosting a spirit show on this Saturday, and it is $20 to attend, and it's going to be a fashion show. It's going to be really exciting. They, all this, the teen council is showcasing clothing from our local stores, so Bucksford Style, Blue Sky, Rail 3 Ranch, and then they also will be wearing formal wear from Say Yes to Prom, so we're pretty excited about that. You can buy your tickets at any of those businesses as well as the Legion, they have those for $20, and it is tax-deductible. Also, Robles Boxing on the same day, earlier in the day, will be hosting their 20 amateur bouts. Doors open at 12, and the event starts at 1:00. Those tickets are $10, and it needs to be cash at the door, and that'll be at Florence K8 Gymnasium. And that's it. I'm pretty excited. It's going to be a good weekend.
That's going to be great. Councilmember Hawkins?
I have nothing this evening.
Councilmember Wall?
First of all, I had to say wow when I heard the $16,500 in donations for the Veterans' Memorial Plaza. I had no idea that the fundraising had reached that level, and I just want to say thank you to everyone who contributed to that. Also, there's a lot of events coming up. We're getting into the beautiful time of our weather. I don't know about monsoon, if it's, if it's going to come later rather than monsooner, but hopefully it won't affect any of the upcoming events that are on the agenda. And I think this POWWOW program is going to be wonderful for the town. I'm assuming it's every month, is that right? Yeah, okay. That's really all I have. Thank you.
I think there's a bubble around Florence, and all the monsoons come, we enjoy the clouds, and then it veers around.
It's going to be over in two weeks, that's what it said on the weather today. Things that I'd like to talk about, I think, already been covered, the Vet Memorial, all the stuff that's gone on there, I'm so proud of, and Brent talked about, you know, the Babett Center. That was an outstanding meeting that we had. We had water people from all over the county, State Representative Dave Cook was there, and it was, it was quite interesting to hear all the different views and all the different concerns about the water that we have, or the water we don't have, I guess I should say. So there is a lot of work being done about that. Oh, the other thing I'd like to mention, I attended the stair climb at Superior Court, and, you know, so proud of our firefighters. I wish I said something about it when they were all here. Those people, men and women, climbed those four stories 16 times in full gear. So it was, and they were doing that in memory of their fellow firefighters for the 9/11. So they did a wonderful job representing our town. Also, you know, other firefighters from Coolidge and other areas here in the, close to us were there also, so. That's what I have for current events.
We had a few police officers, too.
Yeah, there were.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I had the privilege of touring the pre-opening of the Anthem Hospital on Friday, and I just have to say, it is going to be wonderful to have that hospital reopen. It looks like a brand-new hospital. Everything that I saw was like the new car smell. It was, it was beautiful. They've brought in all-new technology, all-new accommodations for patients, and they've already got 65 employees on staff, and they'll be growing as the need develops within the Florence and surrounding area communities. Dr. Smith was a gracious host of several of us from the town, and I'm just so excited. Today was the opening of the emergency room facilities, and they'll be bringing on the inpatient services as they get everything in place for those services. They're going to have a surgical center, they're going to have the ability to conduct various types of imaging, and they have a full lab that will be available as opposed to the prior operation had to send everything out. So I was very impressed, and I think that we have a great partner, having them as part of our community. That's all I wanted to say about that.
Love it. Does everybody hear all of the amazing things that are going on in our community? Actually, yeah, let's give everybody a round of applause for that. Thank you. You know, we have the hospital reopening, healthcare for our citizens, activities and events that are going on for people of all ages to participate in. The fire department with the stair climb was phenomenal, and the CERT team that was out, they're always going and participating in the events. And as I'm talking about this, I remembered, so Brent, I'm going to say this now because I did neglect to follow up on September 12th with Mr. Billingsley. So one of the concerns that the CERT team had was getting ice. So some of the members of the CERT team actually had to leave, go to the gas station and purchase ice. Now, I know like we have the ice machine over at the library, and then somebody had also mentioned that there's a contract or something with the ice machine over at the department, but it wasn't working. So I did say that I would share that feedback with you, so I wanted to make sure that I gave that to you now. I just, I want to thank everybody for participating in our events, and I was really relieved and excited to see that that teen council and spirit show was at 6:00 PM, because I had committed to helping at the boxing bouts. So at first I said, "No, I won't be able to participate," and then I saw it was at 6:00 PM. So I'm excited. And Ms. Garcia, do we have any boards and commissions that we're currently seeking applicants on, or are we full at this time?
We do have a few openings.
Could you share those, or?
Teen Center, we've got two vacancies on the Teen Center and Teen Council, I'm sorry, Teen Council, and I don't remember the others off the top of my head, I apologize.
That's okay, we're going to get those out, we'll share them, so if there's somebody in the community that wants to come aboard and participate, we'd love to have you, the more the merrier. All right, so at this time, we're going to move to Item 12, which is the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number 1. At this time, we'd like to call the meeting to order.
We've done a silent roll call.
Thank you. Item A is discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number 1, July 1st, July 15th, and September 3rd, 2009 special meeting minutes.
Are you looking for a motion?
Uh huh.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for District Number 1, July 1st, July 15th, and September 3rd, 2019.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B is discussion and possible action to approve and ratify a legal services engagement and retention agreement with Sims, Mackin, LTD, and Kathy Bowman for legal representation of the town of Florence, Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number 1, and Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number 2, for the purpose of defending claims and litigation including alternative dispute resolution, discovery, trial, post-trial motions, appeals, and authorizations to enter into related common interest agreements.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. As we mentioned earlier on the town agenda, this is a matter to retain the Sims, Mackin Law Firm and Kathy Bowman to help with specialized legal representation for, and in particular, a lawsuit that was filed by some of the Merrill entities against District Number 1.
Okay, is there any questions, comments? With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the, and ratify the legal services engagement as described in Item 12B.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 13 is Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1 adjournment to executive session.
I motion that we adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will be back to adjourn from this.
And just, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, just as a, as a matter, point of order, could, could we do that motion one more time? Because I believe there was a motion to adjourn, but I think we need the motion to go into the...
Sorry, I read it wrong.
Sorry, just to be clear, I may not have heard that correctly.
We just didn't have the executive session.
I just realized I left that out. I motion that we adjourn from the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1 adjournment into executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Welcome back. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn from the second session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch CFD Number 1 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16, Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2, call to order, this is a silent call to order. And Item A, discussion and possible action to approve and ratify a legal services engagement and retention agreement with Sims, Mackin, LTD, and Kathy Bowman for legal representation of the town of Florence, Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number 1, and Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2, for the purpose of defending claims and litigation including alternate, alternative dispute resolution, discovery, trial, post-trial motions, and appeal to enter into related interests.
Madam Chair and Vice Chair, this matter, if approved, would hire Sims, Mackin, and Kathy Bowman as special legal counsel to address issues related to the district and in particular related to a lawsuit filed against District 1, but there are additional claims that have been asserted by correspondence against the town in District 2.
I'll make a motion to approve Item 16A as read.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch CFD Number 2 executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we're going to adjourn to executive session, but we will come back to adjourn from the floor.
I make a motion, we adjourn from Merrill Ranch CFD Number 2 executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Make a motion, we adjourn from the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, we will come out and adjourn from executive session again.